They are kind of tricky.
Yeah, there is a button right there in the front that says push. Right there and that, and so, and then the little red light turns on.
Recording in progress.
We'll call the meeting to order. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amy, would you do roll call, please?
Absolutely. Commissioner Dipdahl?
Here.
Commissioner Cronin?
Here.
Commissioner Wire?
Here.
Commissioner Shaw? And Mr. Mayor Lindsey?
Here. You have before you the agenda for this evening.
Motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Number one, vacancy interviews, overview and questions of interview process. And Jameson, I'll ask you to address that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for all the applicants who are with us tonight. It's very exciting to see the robust turnout we have looking to fill this vacancy. So, we don't have a lot of vacancies on commission, so if there's any questions, please let me know. So, tonight, we have five applicants with us in person, and Dan Burish is joining us via Zoom. We've arranged them alphabetical by last name. We will be going in that order as we're doing questionings. We will be rotating that as well, so it's not always starting with Nick. We'll start with Nick for the first question, and then it'll rotate through, so we have different orders for each question. And Dan, just so you know, you're going to be after Nick Abraham, before Mary Gail Askeren, so again, just going by that alphabetical by last name. To start, each applicant will have up to five minutes to provide introductory remarks. You don't need to take all that time. That is your time to use as you would like. Again, up to five minutes. And then the City Commission will ask questions of the applicants. Each applicant will have the opportunity to answer every question. For that, we are going to look at a two-minute time limit, just so we can make best use of our time tonight and keep questions moving along. I will keep track of the time, and if you reach the two minutes, I will make note of that or let you know, and just ask that you finish your thought in a few words. Once the commission is finished with all their questions, we will open up for public comments, so anybody from the public wanting to speak to any of the candidates or put any support behind anybody is welcome to do that. The public comment will be open for anybody interested. After that, the City Commission reserves the right to move into executive session for the purpose of discussing qualifications of the applicants. As far as the microphones go, there is a button that says push on there, and once you do that, you'll see the little orange light pop up on the top. Hopefully, you get the hang of it. You can certainly turn it on and leave it on if you want, or if you want to turn it off in between questions. That's up to you guys to handle however you want. I think that handles. Are there any questions from the applicants? Okay. I guess one final thing is the city is not intending on making any announcement or taking any action after the executive session tonight. I expected a future meeting that the commission will either make that announcement or take action or have further discussion to announce who that appointee will be, and that'll be probably the first meeting in June. For sure, it'll be before Commissioner Shaw leaves office at the end of June. With that, I will stand by for any questions.
At this moment in that, once the commission goes into the executive session, if you'd give us two or three more minutes than that, just to see if someone has additional questions that they would like to ask, then that, we'd really appreciate it. So, with that, Nick, would you like to do your opening introductory statement?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Nick Abraham. I've been a lifelong Lake County resident. I've been a resident of the City of Madison since approximately June of, geez, 1998, I believe. I have served two previous terms as a city commissioner. In that, since then, I have gotten married and have two small children. I reside at 324 South Garfield Avenue here in town. I've been employed at the F and M Co-op for 28 and a half years now. I just saw this opening as a chance to get perhaps back into public service and lend a hand wherever I can. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Burish, would you like to have your opening statements?
Sure. Can you guys hear me all right?
Yes.
Perfect. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening and be considered for this open vacancy. Unfortunately, I had some prior commitments, so I can't be there in person, so thanks for allowing me to do this by Zoom. My name is Daniel Burish. I moved to Madison back in 2006 to finish my education at DSU, where I received a bachelor's degree in computer science. Shortly after that, I started a small software company here in Madison. We provide websites and software solutions to area businesses. Currently, I serve as a director at Direct Companies, which is a large engineering firm that serves industrial manufacturing and ag processing facilities here in the Midwest. Some of my civic duties in the past include 12 years in the Madison Fire Department, where I'm certified in firefighter one and two and wildlife and firefighting. I am also certified in ICS, the Incident Command System, which we've obviously utilized multiple times here for natural disasters, including the past two floods in the Duratio event. That's the system that basically helps coordinate all the resources across all levels of government. In the summer of 2021, after the COVID pandemic resided, as most of you know, the city found out our pool controls were corroded from chemical exposure. I helped coordinate and arrange a splash zone program that summer that provided a lot of relief for the youth in our community. And with support from many local businesses, the City of Madison and numerous volunteers, including the firefighters and city workers, we were able to make that happen, which was a pretty cool deal. Some other civic things that I've done, I've also served on the local Chamber of Commerce, held positions as treasurer, vice president, president. I've been involved in numerous community improvement projects, cleanup efforts, and activities that take place around our community. I feel Madison is in a great position right now, as we experience a lot of growth, rising tax revenue. With that in mind, we need to maintain our fiscal and financial responsibilities and continue to provide superior government services, while ensuring that we do not raise rates or increase costs needlessly. As most of you know, our aging infrastructure, that's something that's always on the list, and we've been doing a lot of work, I think, in the past few years, but there's a lot more that needs to be done there. We need to make sure these projects stay on budget, stay on schedule, and that disruptions are kept to a minimum. With considerations to, obviously, existing infrastructure, we also must be prepared for the necessary growth that we're going to be dealing with in Madison. DSU area businesses, they're going to continue to expand. With that, we'll be the people that'll be coming, the services necessary to support these areas and to help out these added members of our community. So, we just need to make sure we're prepared for these opportunities and, obviously, the challenges that they pose to the community. Personally, I feel my experience in engineering and management has provided insight to a lot of small communities across the Midwest. I've worked on projects, including water, wastewater, electrical, software. I'm familiar with large-budget projects. I feel I have the experience and knowledge necessary to lead our community. I am married. I have a wife, two kids. We have a vested interest in this community. We believe Madison is a great place to live, and I kind of hope I am able to carry on that tradition of financial responsibility, efficient government operations, while still balancing a lot of the quality-of-life projects that we look for. These are the things that, obviously, make Madison a shining example in South Dakota, so if given the opportunity to serve, you know, I'm going to put my beliefs aside. I'm going to analyze all issues from the perspectives of all citizens of the community, and I'm hoping to make the best decision that supports everyone. So, with that, thank you for your time, and I'll be available for any questions.
Thank you. Hey, Mary, would you like to go next?
I'm Mary Askeren. I think most of you know me, and I moved here in 2017. And since I moved here, I have really had a sense of coming home. And I don't know if that's because of the 1990s, when I was a practicing artist, I had a lot of art exhibits here, or if it's because I knew a lot of people in town before I moved here, or maybe it's because I ended up encountering people here that I knew elsewhere, like Brad Lawrence from Fort Pierce and Bob Sarr when he was on the PUC. But I think, most importantly, the people of this community have welcomed me, and I have applied for the position because I have a deep sense of gratitude for that. I really believe in giving back to a community that has been so kind to me. When I look at this community, what I see is a community of strength. We have a university. We have manufacturing. We have a good variety of locally-owned businesses, which means there are a lot of employment opportunities. We have strong schools. We have good churches. We have a local hospital and clinic, which are all assets that help to build a community. In the past, the people of Madison, the leaders of Madison, have been very innovative in coming up with solutions, such as a community center, building that as a collaborative project. And what I see, since I've been here, is that Madison has very committed community leaders. Whether it's the people sitting here on the City Commission, the people working in the Chamber of Commerce, or people who are just working behind the scenes because they feel things are important, people are committed here. And I think that is what makes Madison a sustainable community. And granted, we have challenges. We have the same challenges that face everybody else. We have housing challenges, which is hard to address, because right now, building costs are really high. And we have a shortage of childcare, which we've been working on for several years. We've had a task force that's been making incremental steps trying to find solutions. We have aging infrastructure, but Madison has taken advantage of all the funding that was available to do as much as they could, especially when the COVID funding was available. You know, there's more to do, and we're going to have to keep looking for resources to do that. What I would really bring to the table is a willingness to work hard. When I was asked to serve on the AVIRA IRB, which is the Institute for Internal Review Board, depending upon who you talk to, I knew absolutely nothing about research, especially cancer research. And when I first started attending meetings, I would have to spend hours with a dictionary to understand the words and the documents that I was going to be asked to review for the meetings, but, you know, I did work hard. And now, I could probably bore everybody in this room with my knowledge of cancer research. But more importantly, the medical personnel sitting at the table have all told me they appreciate what I bring to the table. I don't see myself as introducing anything radical. I do think outside the box. I am a compulsive brainstormer, but because I'm a compulsive brainstormer, I don't think every idea I have has to, you know, be put into effect, because being a team player is most important to me. But I think the most important skill that I can bring to this commission is the ability to ask good questions. You know, if there's anything that I noticed in 20-plus years of covering government, it's that when the right questions are asked and discussions are held transparently, elected officials make good decisions. And that, I feel, is the strongest strength I would bring to this commission if I were selected. And I thank you for inviting us all to speak for you, and I'm looking forward to your questions.
Very good. Thank you. Luke, would you like to do your introductory?
Hi, my name's Luke Hoff. Thank you for having me, Mr. Lindsey. I'd like to refer to you as Mr. Lindsey. I know I had you in a shop class in, I would say, 2012, I think it was. You finished up Intro to Transportation Technology. I moved to Madison in 2008 with my parents, and from there on, I've lived here my whole life, so I'm a Madison alumni, class of 2014. I've got a beautiful wife and two kids, two boys. I want to say that, so I've spent the last 12 years of my life as a foreman, or as an electrician, going through the industry and really trying to credit myself as doing a good job in building structures, I guess, really, that's what I'm after. So, biggest thing is, I have some notable projects that I've done around the area. Best Western Plus would be one of them, runnings. Evaded in small projects. You know, I've been in Madison community homes, helping with emergency calls, fixing furnaces, fixing air conditioners, doing electrical work. Some of the qualities that I bring, you know, I currently work as a general foreman for Electric Construction Company, and we do large-scale projects. I work a lot in the area, a lot in the area of Madison, a lot in the area of Sioux Falls. So, I have a good understanding of blueprints, backgrounds with agendas and meeting minutes, as well as RFPs, such as everything that kind of goes with the process of doing electrical work. So, I really felt that, you know, this opportunity came open, and I just kind of felt it in my heart that I should apply for this. I really appreciate following up these wonderful candidates here, and I just appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelly Johnson, would you like to do your introductory statement?
Thank you. You're good. My name's Kelly Johnson, obviously. I have ID to verify that if you want. And the new identification process here throughout the country. A lot of things that have been said here. I share similar experiences. Nick and I served for a term on, when I first came on, City Commission. I was on for two terms. I got off by election process. Over those years, over that time period since I was voted out, I guess I've done a lot of things, followed up on a lot of things that we were talking about back then, you know? It truly is amazing, as I think about that, what's elapsed since back then till now, what you've been able to accomplish. Several factors have led to that, but I think my wife, I mentioned in here, has significant illness, which she took some great medical care, which was very difficult to find. She's pretty much in remission, and while she is in remission now, and now we're kind of putting it together again. And when I heard this position was going to be opened up, I said to her, I said, I think I might apply for that, throw my name in the hat on that, and she said, no, don't do that. And I said, that's what she said to me five years ago when you got sick. They said, you tell me you're in remission now. I said, give me a break here. She said, it's true. She said, yeah, you should do this. So, I have a love of interaction with people, as stated in here. I'm flexible. I believe in decision-making, collaborative decision-making. The vote certainly counts and has to happen sometimes. I like to see this, I like to see any groups that I'm working with, whether it was at the state level a couple of times, or commission, or on the school board where I served previously. I'd like to see us get as close as we can to an agreeable decision, you know? We don't have to always agree on everything. We can get it close enough, then we know we've locked arms, and there's something we can all not only live with, but we think is acceptable. And so, that's a real important thing to me, and I think you'd find that out with me as a member of the commission. So, here I am, offering myself and hoping for the opportunity to serve again. I, there are so many things that I think I'd like to mention, and I do all the talking about what some of you guys have accomplished, and that's not why I'm here, but there are some significant things. This is an interesting community, really, as I was born and raised here, lived away for about 25 years, and moved back. I've been back here about 25 years now, which really kind of discloses my age a little more, I'd like to. But anyway, you know, I, there are a lot of good things about, strong, solid things about this community. There really are. I work at the hotel three nights a week, and in the morning, I get up about seven or eight o'clock. And there was a guy here, there are some guys that are working on the highway going north. He said, well, what's there to do in town here, you know? And it kind of stymied me a little bit, and I said, well, this, this, and this. He likes to fish, and I said, well, you're a little obscured on that one right now with the weather. And he said, yeah, I think of my cheap pools and see if we can go out and hook a few, you know? But he said, or I can go to my bedroom and sleep. I said, that's always a nice option, too. But, you know, what do we offer people? And, you know, working at the hotel has been really insightful for me, because it's pronounced to me what people are looking for, what they pass for our community. You know, not just entertainment, but, you know, what do they want, you know, and what more can we make of that here, those kinds of things? We have a lot of things to offer. So, that is really, over the last five years, we're kind of at the hotel, almost five years, I've kind of thought, hmm, what do visitors want to see here, you know? What kind of, not just in accommodations, but who we are as a community. They, I enjoy the arts a lot, sports, too, for that matter. Just get the Dodgers up in front of me, and I'll prove it to you. But, you know, in all honesty, when Dakota State made the switch that they were in, we had lapsed for a while in the arts, okay? And they've been doing some things to bring that back, as well as the community, some things for a well-rounded community to have. Those kind of things being accessible to the community, I think, are really important. What we can do to support that is make us a whole community, makes us stand out for what we have and who we are. That's me.
Yep, you can finish your thought if you'd like, yeah.
Let me, okay. I am, of course, when I mentioned that, you know, I was going to put my name in the hat for this, I had people calling me to talk about taxes. We'll always talk about taxes. Taxes are the price we pay for a limited democracy, I think, you know? But that doesn't mean we necessarily have to lowball ourselves or highball ourselves. We just have to have a revenue base that's sustainable for all people. And that means all, I don't look at people just as taxpayers. I look at them as citizens of the community. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you. Jenny, would you like to go next, please?
Hi, I sure would. Hi, Jenny Wolf. Fairly familiar with most of you. Mayor Lindsey is the one who appointed me to the Planning Commission in 2017. Commissioner Dipdahl and I used to work together back in our co-op days, and Commissioner Wire and I lived just a couple of houses away for over 20 years, so. Now, most of you pretty well don't know Commissioner Cronin quite as well, but if I were selected to be on the commission, I look forward to getting to know you and work with you more closely. Speaking of Commissioner Cronin, did you know that prior to her joining the commission, in its nearly 110-year history, only three women had ever served on the commission before? So, congrats to Commissioner Cronin for breaking that barrier. I think prior to you being appointed, it had been almost 15?
It had been a few years, yeah.
Before a woman had last served. And never have there been two females on the commission at the same time. So, if nothing else, I wanted to throw my hat in the ring just to make sure that we had some choice in representation, not knowing who else would be offering themselves up to be considered for the role. But as I mentioned in my application, I think that's, you know, something important that we take a look at, making sure that there is diverse representation for the residents of Madison on the commission. Now, I don't advocate for choosing anybody to serve in that role based solely on their gender or any other identity factors. So, a little bit more about my qualifications. I've lived in Madison for the entirety of my adult life. Moved here to go to college, graduated from DSU before that, lived just down the road in Howard, so right next door. Madison's pretty much been my home then for most of my life, or at least greatly factored into it even when I wasn't officially living here. Have kids that have gone through the Madison school system, also have one that is a fellow Dakota State graduate. I've been involved in a number of things around the community throughout the years. My first career was working at East River Electric in the Member Services Department, so I got very well acquainted with utilities, regulations, how to communicate with members about things, such as how your electricity works and why, why it might cost what it does, which I know some of you have heard some comments recently with the recent rate increase that we had regarding our utilities, and that's, you know, nobody likes to see rates go up, but coming from that background, I certainly understand why, why rates need to increase and all of those very intricate and detailed things that go into setting electric rates. After I left the cooperative, then I went on to, very fortunate to work from home for a risk management firm, which has given me new expertise in a variety of industries, in insurance coverages, in health and benefit plans, and really, what I do in my role there is help analyze and communicate anything that might be going into an organization's operations. Also, something that is very applicable to being a commissioner, being able to look at what things are going on in the markets, what things are going on in the economy, and tying all of those things together. That's what I do on a daily basis for my job. So, very glad to be here in front of you, having the opportunity to be considered for this position, and look forward to answering any questions that you might have further. Thanks.
All right, thank you. I believe I'll start out with the first question, and that, and then we'll go on down through the commission, and that. And so, the first person to answer would be Nick, and then move on down through the line. So, how would you handle a complaint from an upset citizen?
Well, previously, I had the opportunity to handle several, more than several, upset citizen, especially. They used to forward some upset phone calls to me in the evening, because several of the officers and dispatchers knew that I was up and wouldn't mind. The best thing that you can do is always just try and explain to your best ability or knowledge of the ordinance or why they may be having the situation that they're having. Most of the time, they actually just want someone to listen, whether it's anything that the, you know, as a commissioner, there's a lot of things that you actually can't do that aren't your job. You don't have a ticket book. It's, you know, it's things like that that you cannot address, but usually, people just want to be listened to and pointed in the correct direction to try and help them out.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Dan Burish, the same question. How would you handle a complaint from an upset citizen?
Just to springboard off what Nick said, I think the first thing you need to do is listen. You know, a lot of residents, they just want to be heard in what their concerns are, the problem that's happening. After that, you know, you got to look at, obviously, the ordinances or the laws that surround whatever's going on, and then, based on that, you need to come to a resolution. So, if there's something that you can do on their behalf to assist them to resolve the issue, that'd be great. In some cases, there's a lot of times where it's, where you can't. So, I think you just need to hear the citizens out, talk through that situation, and help them understand, you know, what might be the options that they have, and how can they pursue that. So, thank you.
Mary, same question. How would you handle a complaint from an upset citizen?
Well, I think the answers we've gotten so far are pretty good. Truthfully, though, listening is important and being curious, and trying to find out exactly what they're upset about. Sometimes, what we think we're hearing and what we're hearing are, what we think we're hearing and what's actually happening are not the same things. So, it's really important to understand what the person has to say. And then, if it's possible at that moment, address it with, you know, appropriately. If they need more information, provide more information. If it's a situation that reflects the decision recently made, see if they understand the discussion that went into it. You know, sometimes, I don't know if you guys have noticed this, but folks don't read the paper, or they don't listen to the commission meetings, so they don't know the discussion that went into a decision, and they may not realize that what they wanted to happen was considered but was rejected for a specific reason. So, a lot of- So, a lot of it is making sure they understand what was going on. But also, if it's not possible to respond at that moment, make sure to get a phone number and promise to get back to them. Try to get the answers they need and get back to them. The important thing is really not to blow them off, but to make them feel that they've been heard and to make sure that you understand what's going on.
Luke, same question. How would you handle a complaint from an upset citizen?
I would take it on a personal note and level with the individual. And then I would try to communicate it with the rest of the commission as we go through the city circle and do any meetings. Um, one thing I like to say at work is solutions, not problems. So, a lot of times, nothing really, nothing that is a problem can't also be a solution. So, hearing them out, replying to them, giving them good insight, following, again, ordinances and taking care of the complaint in as well is something I would look for.
Okay, thank you. Kelly, how would you handle a complaint from an upset citizen?
Well, I think probably, um, that, for me, the way I function with people is I want to be sure I understand what their complaint is and have they taken this forward somewhere else, somewhere else before? In other words, have they addressed that at the departmental level? Um, in my first term, I was in finance, in, um, Commissioner Finance. Uh, the second term, I worked with, um, um, streets and some of the things in that department. And I always like to know for sure that, that they've had an opportunity first to address that, you know? Because, yes, we're, we're problem solvers for them. We want to be part of that with them. But we need to be sure that they're going to the chain of command. And that's a critical piece, you know? And they have that right. That's the other part of it, too, is they have that right to address things directly with the mayor or the city administrator, finance. Um, um, but they all, at the commission, once I understand completely what they, what they, what they have, what the concern, excuse me, what the concern is and what they have tried in the past with it. And sometimes some of the things I've tried, I find out that probably shouldn't have been tried in the first place. Some of our, you know, we've, we've, we've tried to, um, use these mechanisms to resolve things. But that's just experience, I think. And then there's, um, and then, um, seeking, um, other resources within the city to help them all with that. I know I'm thinking about what Nick was talking about. We've had times we've had complaints about property complaints, you know? Um, I know that some efforts have been made to try to scoop that up and move it forward a little bit. That's a difficult one, you know? Let's see, when, when you go to somebody's house and say your yard is a mess or whatever the case may be, that's very personal. It's extremely personal and, um, has to be held delicately, um, and carefully. But at the same time, other people have a right to have their property looked decent, you know? So, you're, you're kind of in a balancing act there.
That's two minutes. Go ahead and finish your thought. I said, you, you could finish your thought, but that was two minutes.
Yeah. So, I, 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 when I was, when I was on the commission, sometimes there were some things I could help resolve. But sometimes I had to just say, why don't you bring it to a commission meeting? You know? Just see how bad, what we can do about this. Uh, what, how bad you want this to be changed? Bring it to the commission. And sometimes a lot of time that involves fees and taxes and those kinds of things also. But what better place to resolve that than at the commission level or to start resolving it? So, thank you.
Jenny, how would you handle a complaint from an upset citizen?
Being on the planning commission, I do get complaints from citizens from time to time. Probably not to the extent that you all do. But I'm guessing that there's some common themes in when citizens reach out to me to talk about planning commission stuff. Uh, number one being, a lot of times, it isn't really something that I have any control over being on the planning commission, which I suspect is the case for things that citizens come to you as well. On the planning commission, we don't have anything to do with the streets, but people love to talk to me about their complaints about the streets. Uh, sometimes people come to me and talk to me about my neighbor's property has weeds that are overgrown and it's stuff like that. But, um, you know, just first of all, listening and saying, I hear your concern. That's, that's not something that I'm in charge of, but hey, you can call Ryan Higgin, talk to him. Here's his contact information. Um, another common theme is a lot of times just misinformation. So, you know, I, I heard that this, this developer got a kickback for that TIF that he's going after. And, you know, TIFs are a common thing that have a lot of confusion as to how they work. And so, just correcting some of that misinformation that people might have heard. Or, um, you know, when the, the new Dollar General was, was built, there was some things that were said to me about how that annexation of the property, you know, the city or what have you, how that all works. So, a lot of times it's just correcting maybe what they heard wrong or pointing them to, here's the agenda packet. You can read all of the information. It's, it's up there if you'd like to see it. Um, and then like other people outside, a lot of times people just want somebody to listen to them, giving them an, an ear and a place to vent. And occasionally, I, I have on the Facebook pages and things that there's a common concern or a common question that comes up, I might say, hey, the link to the agenda packet is here. We'd like to read more about it. Uh, one other thing I will say.
This, you are at two minutes. I'll let you go ahead and finish your thought.
Real quick? I, I just want to say, I think the addition of Savannah to the city team has been excellent. And I have seen a real improvement in her efforts to inform people of what's going on at the city commission meetings and just, just great. So, I think that, that in and of itself is another great avenue for communicating better with our citizens.
Very good, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'll just note, this is new, we don't do this very often. I'll, I'll be the timekeeper. I'll let you know when you get to your two minutes. And then after that, you can finish your thought and I'll defer to the mayor on how long he wants to let you finish that thought or not. So, I'm just the timekeeper here.
All right. So, if you go next and, and then I'll start with Dan.
All right. Dan, can you hear me?
Yep, going for it.
All right, I'm gonna go with the, the pretty straight-up generic question. Um, you know, what, what do you see as, you know, the greatest challenges in the position? And, and we've kind of touched a little bit on how we've, how we'd address certain, um, scenarios. But, uh, what do you feel are the greatest challenges and maybe what you'd do to move forward with them or address them?
Sure. Greatest challenges, well, you know, Madison is, it's not a small town. It's, it's growing quite quickly, so it has a fairly large budget that you're dealing with. So, there's a lot of complexity that comes, um, just based on that scale of our city. Outside of that, you know, we're gonna continue and grow. Um, there's a lot of things that are happening. And one thing about Madison is it seems like we're very resilient during downturns. Um, we have the ability that, uh, we kind of tread water and we get through. And then before you know it, we're, we're growing and we're growing fast. Um, so with that comes a lot of planning and development, um, making sure all, as I said, all the aging infrastructure that we're dealing with currently, but also considering all of the economic development, all of the workforce development, the services that come with that growth. You're bringing all these families in, um, for DSU and expanding manufacturing, but you need all the services and activities to support that level of growth. Um, and it's not only just governmental services. Um, when people come to these communities, we have our lakes, um, our parks, our bike paths. There's some advancements there that I think that'll help promote the families that are gonna be looking at this area to move here. Um, and having those quality of life developments along with the financial responsibility for the government services that we need to provide, I think that's a healthy balancing act that we need to maintain. Um, and I think Madison's set up to succeed in that regard, considering, uh, as Mary had mentioned, all the grants and funding that we received. You know, we saw a lot of infrastructure improvements and it was a bit of a headache, but we got through that. And now we're starting some other improvements downtown that are gonna increase safety, um, promote kind of that feeling and that welcome nature to our community. So, I think there's a lot of positive ahead, but with that comes the challenges. And, um, I hope I can help solve some of those issues. Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mary, thank you. Thanks, Dan.
I'd like the question clarified because what I was thinking was entirely different than the previous answer. Are you asking what are the challenges in serving as a commissioner? Or what are the challenges that the commissioner faces in dealing with issues in Madison?
You know, I'll let you choose. I, I'm, I'm just trying to get to know everyone.
Now you see how I split hairs. Um, now, I think that I'm going to interpret the question to mean what is the challenge of serving as a commissioner? And I think this challenge in serving as a commissioner, first of all, is understanding the community and what the community needs and wants. And to reconcile that with the available resources. Because I'm sure there's a lot you would do in this community if you had unlimited resources, but there's always that reconciliation and, um, which really comes up at budget time. Um, but I think the other thing is as a commissioner, you are the face of Madison outside the community, wherever you represent, um, Madison in meetings and stuff. But you're also the face of Madison to the community. Because so often, people in the community look to you as the city. You know, you become the city, you know? Um, employees are the same way. You've become the city. And I think sometimes it's almost a, a PR position. You really have to be present, you know? When, when the chamber has downtown and Madtown, you're there. When, um, the Domestic Violence Center has its fundraiser, you're there because you show that we care with your presence. And I think one of the challenges is being present, you know? Being present and making good decisions are the two things that I think are the challenges that you always face in that position. Thanks.
Thank you, Mary. Luke?
I would say that the, the largest, um, the biggest thing for me would be, um, the learning curve. I'm obviously a younger candidate. I would, I feel like I'm very flexible to work with a team. I'm very good with teamwork. I, I would tell you that the commission works well as a team in this community. We do really well here. And, um, understanding every viewpoint of every commissioner. And I understand that every now and again, we'll have our disagreements as well. So, um, disagreements would be another good, um, point on that, this perspective as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Kelly?
Yeah, um, a few, a number of years ago, before the technology thing became inundated in Dakota State, and I saw, when I say inundated, I sound like I'm negative about that and I'm not. Um, I watched that whole thing over the years. But, um, the president here, his name was Carlton Opert. And he was charged with opening some new programs at Dakota State. And a lot of them were two-year programs. Many of them didn't last, but it was, it was an effort in a difficult time at Dakota State to put some new programming in. Um, and that's when we ended up then with, um, moving into that. After that, we ended up with that technology. Anyway, I don't wanna be the historical events here guy on, on everything. But it was interesting. I said to him one time, what do you think Dakota State should be? And he said, you know, I think it should be a place that's easy to get into, but hard to get out of. And what he meant was, everybody should have a chance and opportunity. And everybody, you know, but their, their success then becomes their obligation. But also their success is our obligation. Well, those same analogies can be made to what we do. You know, I, again, I referred to my last five years 'cause I've never worked in any, I've been in, um, working mental health centers most of my life. Um, and working at the hotel, I have so many people, I'll go through the breakfast room in the morning 'cause I'm there early, and I'll have people say, a really nice town. What is there here for us? You know, they really want to know what there is there here for us, job-wise, okay? Um, and then other things like our school system and stuff like that. Um, you know, some of those things I can speak to and some of them I can't always. But, um, I think that's important. This should be almost like an easy place to get into, but hardly leave, you know? Now, that brings up a whole thing. In the past, we've talked about, we've talked about growth and what does growth mean? You can get a lot of new people in town. Then you're gonna build some new houses, you know, or do you have housing for them? That gets to be a real problem. I've had a lot of people come back and say, I've looked for used, used housing here, other housing. It, 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 there, it isn't the plethora that we'd like to think there is of it.
You're at two minutes now.
But we can make that, make that work, I think. Um, but it, there's all kinds of opportunities here for us to move to the next level on some things. Um, anyway, I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, thank you, Kelly. Jenny?
All right. I, I think the biggest challenge of being a commissioner, or one of the biggest challenges, was that you're not actually all that powerful. And, uh, what I mean to say is that, you know, it's easy to look outside of the commission and say, you know, if I was on the commission, I would do this to solve our housing problem or I would do this to fix our streets or I would do this to make our town a real destination for people. It's great to have all those ideas, but as a commissioner, your scope of authority is actually pretty limited. So, the challenge is, how do you, within that scope of authority, have the greatest impact and affect the greatest change and be that leader in your community while staying within the confines of what it means to be a commissioner? As a commissioner, you're generally not, uh, it's not a legislative-making body where you're coming to every meeting prepared with laws and ordinances to be voted on. Sometimes that's something that passes through the commission, but, you know, generally, it's, it's not, uh, on the agenda every single time. Um, so, that, that's the challenge is, how do you take all of these great ideas and these great things that we hear from our community and that are in our strategic plan and that, uh, we see from going on in other towns? And within the scope of a commissioner, how can you affect some of that and put that into action? And, and that's not always the easiest one. What your agenda entails is approving bills to be paid and, um, you know, hearing updates from the wonderful team that works at the city for us. You know, a lot of times those things are gonna be more on their plate than it is on the commission plate. So, I think, I think that's really the challenge is, is learning how you effectively use that role of commissioner to impact changes that you want to see when your scope is fairly limited.
Thank you. Nick?
I'm going to, uh, attack that question from the other end because everybody has stated quite well, uh, the limited role of a commissioner. Um, challenges going forward for the city, I see. Yeah. The childcare center is built, the building's built. Uh, it's probably not the end of the discussion. There will be things that will come up, you know, funding and keeping it going, things like that. Affordable housing is always a huge consideration. Again, limited things that the city can do with that, but making land available, infrastructure, things that, uh, don't happen. When a private developer goes and does it, you know, when they are for, when they put in the infrastructure, the cost gets very involved and goes up. And that would limit affordable housing. So, the city making land available for affordable housing would be something. Um, the industrial park is getting full. That will probably be something that probably needs to be, there's probably some more land that needs to come online in the future there. And the price of land does not make that an easy thing to take, you know, to take into consideration. We'll need some budgeting and long-term consideration. But, so those would be a couple of things that I would list as real challenges moving forward.
Thank you.
Sarah?
Okay, um, so not the same question, but maybe along the same lines. Um, what is something that the city of Madison could be doing better? Mary?
I'm sorry, what is the question again?
What is something that the city of Madison could be doing better?
Ironically, um, the answer I would have given a year ago is different. I would say, you know, um, being available to the public. But I have been so impressed with the meetings that Roy and Jamison have been having. You know, I think it's so important to be out there and be available so that the city doesn't have to, you know, reach out to you. I think, I think maintaining that transparency is a challenge that's always going to exist, primarily because no matter how transparent you are, the person on the other side has to be receptive. And I think that is a big challenge. I don't know how you meet that challenge. How do you get people on the other side to listen when you are doing everything you can to be out there? And I think the city of Madison- And I think the city of Madison keeps making efforts in that way. I mean, the, having commission meetings available, you know, the meetings that have. And I know from when I served on the newspaper, that when there's a public event, somebody's going to be there, usually two or three people, you know? I suppose you have to discuss it so you don't have an informal meeting. But I think that the city of Ma, truthfully, I think you guys are doing a great job. I'm sorry, I don't have a lot of suggestions.
Okay. Luke, what do you think the city of Madison could be doing better?
Childcare, I'm thinking of the little guy. You know, childcare within home daycare is a personal attachment for me. My son was part of a neglect issue in a daycare here in town. And I found that the community came together really well and helped me with taking care of that. So if we could find some grants to just help, you know, let's say, an in-home daycare, get some funding, whether it be federal, state, or even a city program, that would be one of them. And then I was also thinking that sidewalks would be a good one. I've noticed a lot of community members utilizing and walking down the streets of Madison. I've noticed there's, there's some frustrations there from local community members as well. I think that same thing, trying to find federal and state funding to just kind of provide these programs to help people understand that there's, there's help to get your sidewalk built. So, thank you.
Thank you. Kelly, what could the city of Madison do better?
You know, I want to say something real, I'll make this brief. Comments, I don't, not disagreeing, there is sometimes limited what we can do. But the reality is, we're a commission, or you are a commission, I should say at this point. I hope to join that, join you in that. But a commission is, is different than a board. A board has a limited scope of practice. School board, they hire and fire the superintendent, they recommend budget, those kind, and a couple other functions, okay? But a commission is a decision-making body with responsibilities attached to it for administering certain parts of things. I think one of the decisions has been made that the structure of what we do with adding of some staff and positions to have moved us into a whole new position in the community. We're moving, we really are, we are moving ahead as a result of that. Those decisions are sometimes difficult, you know, a lot of confusion, how is this going to work? But it seems to be working well. Here we go, here we are in the, you know, new building. Great example. Real quickly here, I'm very oriented to, by the way, I want to say, to the employees. Whether they're the guys working on the telephone poles, or removing the snow, or whatever. I'm very employee, very, very employee-oriented in my beliefs about how we administer the city. This should be a great place for people to come to work. And we've tried to make that in the past, and I think you have too. But we really do need that orientation towards our employees. Positive orientation. I think some of the other things we could do, as I know the North Egan Project is happening. I live in the depths of that project. And I think we're going to go south after that, is my understanding. Is we're going to talk about what are we going to do with Main Street, you know? Do some tuning up down there. We started talking about some of those things in the past.
You're at two minutes.
Enough.
Thank you. Jenny, what could the city of Madison do better?
I believe you raised this question initially, Commissioner Cronin, is what, what I think the city could do better. And I want to stay away from what I think. Because as serving on a commissioner, it's not just what about what I think, but what the residents at large think and what other experts and information we've looked into says. So on that note, I had looked at the 2026 strategic plan that was approved previously. And you know what? It's actually really hard to come up with something that I think could be done better. Because almost everything in that strategic plan has had action taken on it. That said, I think an area where there is still more progress to be made comes to the realm of marketing Madison and economic and community competitiveness. I would say that Madison is a pretty well-kept secret for the most part, right? Like, we don't, we don't necessarily tout it loud enough that this is a really great place to raise a family as somebody who can work from anywhere and still is choosing to live here and raise my family here and be a resident. So I, I would say that let's shout louder to the rest of the state and other areas around about what a great place Madison is to live and to work and to visit and to have a second home around on the lake. That we've got a lot of great things that we can advertise to get people to see the, the magic of Madison, I believe is what they termed in the strategic plan. So that, that's what I would say. We, we need to brag about ourselves more.
Thank you. Nick?
The effectiveness of communication, and it's not negative on the commission or even of the city's staff. But I think you'd see, especially with the North Egan Project, is despite having lots of meetings and planning sessions and everything that a commission could have done, after the fact, people were very upset. And I don't know how to better reach them or how to handle that. Because it seems to have been well-advertised and people, it's one of the things that you'll always run into, is satisfying people or, you know, when it affects them, it's, it's definitely different. And, but furthering, working on reaching out and getting people to understand the full scope of a project, I think would, would be beneficial. But it's been that way, you know, when I was on commission 15 years ago. After the fact, people always came in and said, well, I didn't know that. We had the meetings, we talked about it at length. If we could figure out how to make it more, how to have people better understand the direction would be great. That's all.
Thank you. Dan?
Sure. Overall, I'd have to say, the city's doing really well. One thing probably that we could work on, again, that Nick had touched on, was communication. Communication of planning activities and projects throughout the community, especially as they pertain to the budgets of our citizens. I think there's a lot of projects, whether it's water, electricity, wastewater, that are going to be happening throughout our city. So making sure those people are informed, what's going on, why we're doing it, on the plan or on the schedule that it's happening. Making sure businesses are informed in that regard. And helping them understand that these are things that we need to take care of. We're going to make sure we do it efficiently. We're going to watch the costs and the schedule to make sure that it's in line with what we budgeted. That way, when it comes to rates for water and electricity and things of that nature, we can ensure that we're not adjusting or making increases that aren't necessary. So I think with the addition of Savannah Olinger and doing some of the marketing aspects, pair that with the chamber, the LEIC, I think we can get there to where, you know, we're driving some of that economic development and helping build out some of that communication to show where Madison is going in the future.
Great, thank you.
All right. I think to Luke here. First of all, just want to reiterate what Jamison said. Thank you guys for being here. I mean, you put yourself out there to be in this position is, is, is one step. And so just wanted to say thank you guys for being here. But with that, my thoughts are, can you name me one of your top leadership qualities? And how that will translate in being an effective commissioner?
One of my top qualities is I work with crews of upwards of 12 men. And we, we, I like to facilitate and coordinate job skills to every level of, from apprentice to journeyman to foreman, to general foreman. I really like to get on a personal level with every single individual that I work with. And I'm not going to lie, the best quality I have doing that is remembering my apprenticeship and getting back to them. And using that as kind of say, that it actually brings it back to myself, too. I learn all the time from my apprentices. I probably shouldn't say that. But, but yeah, I would say it's a good quality I use for leadership. And then I also do go to bat for them in meetings as well with other trades during, you know, all meetings we go to in the trade. And coordinating with other trades. So, thank you.
Mr. Jackson, I'll ask you the same question. Please name one of your top leadership qualities and how that would translate to be an effective commissioner.
I don't mind meaningful confrontation. I mentioned that I'm kind of a collaboration seeker. I don't mind the vote, you know, if we vote against each other and it goes one way for three people and two for the other. That's okay, as long as we talk it out well. And publicly talk it out well, too. I think that, that kind of discussion is what we really need. The public is screening, and rightly so, for transparency, you know? And, and we can, if we can prevent meaningful transparency of the things, I think that might be some of the way. And, and I've seen some efforts on the current commission's part, some of the meetings you've held. That would solve some of that transparency problem, that everybody has a chance to see what's going on. And there's some other kinds of things that we can also, we can also do to the way we set rates and things like that. Those are long-term concerns and questions about how we do that. But there are some meaningful kinds of things that are being done in other places where the community is more involved in that rate-setting process. And the commission brings their budget to this, to that group and says, this is what we got to have to make the city work. What are you going to set the rates at, you know? What are you going to do? But there are a lot more community involvement that way, too. And nobody can walk away saying, really, we didn't know, you know, there are real opportunities there. So I think those kind of skills, communication, collaboration, working together. And I'm always one of those guys, you know, that's willing to reverse this, reverse this position. When we got, on, on, on the, and I'll make this real brief, but this is an example. When we met on the North, North Egan Project, I was opposed to some of the street kind of things we were going to do there. I've, I've completely changed around on that after I, after I had a chance to listen to some of the things you guys have talked about, some of the other kinds of things. I'm not afraid to say, oh, put me down is wrong on that first one. And, you know, let's change, let's change our opinion on this, so.
Thank you. Ms. Wolf, a leadership quality that translates into being an effective commissioner?
Yes, so like many of you, I'm sure, I have taken multiple personality assessments throughout the years. And my number one trait always comes up as it's termed different things. But whatever the, the knowledge, the knowledge category is, the data nerd, the, the analysis analytic type realm. So my approach to being a commissioner is, I will be the one who has not only read the full agenda packet before the meeting, but I've also gone and looked up whatever ordinance might be referenced. If there's an ordinance in there or some kind of link to some other plan or resource. I, I am the walking encyclopedic nerd, is what I would call it. And then, not just that, but also the ability to take whatever information is in there and think critically about it and apply it. So when there's a budget request or something related to finances, I will think back in my brain and see how it applies to the overall strategic plan or something like that. The nerdy commissioner, I will be the nerdy one.
Thank you. Mr. Abraham?
Well, it may not necessarily be a leadership quality. But I think what I learned from my first go-around with the city commission was to effectively explain and lay out a goal to your foreman or whoever's in charge that day. But allow them to do it, as they are the guys that work every day and know best perhaps how to do it or how to try new things. And I think that, you know, being a good guide to them as for the task to complete, but allow them to perhaps find a way to do it better or more efficiently. And, you know, I think that is probably the best way to work, especially with some of the small groups of street guys and parks guys. They're very good at their jobs and tell, you know, have them in the correct direction, but allow them to do them, things their way.
Thank you. Mr. Burish, a leadership quality that would translate into being an effective commissioner?
Sure. I'd say one of my strongest qualities or leadership abilities is probably being able to act while under pressure, make those tough decisions that need to be made. Whether it's in the fire service, whether we're dealing with life or death situations, or as a director of direct companies, you know, we started out with 40 employees three years ago. And now, three of us are now in charge of over 170 people. We need to be able to take a look at of all, all these decisions that have to be made, act on them, and provide that strong leadership or that direction. So if we're impacting people, whether it's at the dinner table or during a very distraught time of their life, being able to show that leadership and have that direction and provide that, I think that's a strong example or a quality that I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary?
I think that my top leadership skill would be that I am a strategic thinker. I can understand the ramifications of decisions and I can actually think backwards. So when I was, began volunteering at the history museum, Julie is talking about needing to increase revenue. And, which basically is about increasing membership. And the way you increase membership, I told her, was with programming. I said she had to start with programming. If she didn't start with programming, people wouldn't come in the museum. If they didn't come in the museum, they'd see no reason to support it. So that they couldn't increase their revenue. So I would say that the greatest thing that I bring to any table is that I'm a very strategic thinker. Where do we want to go? How can we get there?
Thank you.
All right. I don't have another particular question from myself. So I'm going to go down the line and ask the commissioners and that, if there's any additional question that you would like asked.
I'm going to kick it over to maybe Jamison or Amy. Do you, does staff, you guys particularly, or any staff have any questions that you heard?
I'm just a timekeeper. Thank you for asking, though.
Any, any, from any of the staff? Any, maybe Mike, Gary, any questions?
Putting everybody on the spot.
I will, how much time did we allot for, Jamison? Have we?
In total, we didn't, we didn't have a deadline at all. It's 6:36, so I think you probably have time for a couple more questions. I think that's reasonable.
Who are we on now? I don't even know. So Kelly, what do you feel the role of the city is? You know, what, what, what are the responsibilities or expectations of the city when it refers to maybe economic development or affordable housing? Where, where does the city, where do you feel the city should push to? And what, what is that line of responsibility?
I don't know that I necessarily understand, I understand your question. I don't necessarily know there's just a single line for us, you know? I know we are administrative, this is, this is an administrative body that's here to run the city. But to get things done, somebody in state government said to me one time, you know, to get that things done at the top, the farther up the food chain you go, so to speak in government, the harder it is to change things, okay? You know? And I think that's really true. It's easy for me to, somebody come, one of my neighbors come over and said, pick up, pick up the sticks in your yard, will you? And I'll probably do it, because it's a responsibility. But if the city comes with an truck and they want to take out my trees and all that stuff, which is fine for the current project, you know, then it gets to be a little bit more up the food chain. Or it changes that you want to make. I mean, consider the structure building here, you know? Building a garage would probably not be too much trouble compared to the structure that you've built here. It was a lot of work, it was a lot of effort, a lot of things went into it. Very well done. But, so I think that's probably, the city's, the city's also has the opportunity or the ability to get other people involved beyond just ourselves. Planning is a great example. Planning is a great example of that, you know, the recommendations that come up from the planning board, safety committees, the various committees that at least we've served on in the past. Those are excellent opportunities to draw more people into the decision-making process at that, at that earliest level, library board, those kind of things. So that's the best I can say, you know. I think it's all, I think it's true.
Thank you. Jenny?
Yeah, very astute question, because I think almost everybody here mentioned housing at some point in their application, and it's one of those problems that's easy to identify and not so easy to fix. You know, a direct way that the city is involved in looking at housing and how we support the development of more housing is through the zoning ordinances, which is something that we see on a regular basis on the planning commission, and something that we've discussed from time to time in terms of, do we need to look at making a new zone that might be more suitable for, and we're seeing more interest in mixed-use housing, for example, or at the densities of residences and seeing more interest in multi-housing units, maybe where there haven't been multi-housing units before. So those are certainly some things that at the city level definitely have some control over, as well as using tax increment financing as an incentive for housing development. That's another area where the city has direct involvement in looking at how we can support the development of more housing. In addition to where we would have direct influence, also working closely with stakeholders and other partners, such as the LEIC, the Chamber of Commerce, statewide organizations, Habitat for Humanity. I think they're currently building a house here in Madison, are working on one. So other partners, too, that we can leverage collaboration and work together to fill some of those gaps, I would say are a couple areas where the city has authority and ways to improve the housing situation.
Thank you. Nick, same question?
As you all know, and as I learned before, it's kind of limited as to the actual things that you can do. But TIFs and, that's probably the easiest way for someone who's well-funded to get into it, but like I said in one of my previous answers, low-cost land, or, you know, maybe even some buyouts or something like that, and redevelopment, but mostly not be overly intrusive, you know. City wants to be a working partner, and to stay, you don't want to set all the rules aside, but you want to facilitate growth and make it as easy as possible for someone to do the job. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary? Or Dan, sorry, Dan?
No worries, Dre. So I guess the question, kind of where government lies, you know, government services, I think there's two parts of it. There's necessities, or what our needs are and what our wants are. Those necessities cover our public utilities, electricity, water, along with public safety and other government services. Those are the things that when the budgets get tight, those are the last things that we're going to cut. So when you ask where the line is for economic development, or what I would consider into the line of quality-of-life things, projects such as pools, parks, community centers, because those are the activities that are going to draw families here and provide economic development, you got to look at what your budget allows. If your budget allows for more of those activities, that's what we can pursue. And, you know, through the Chamber of Commerce, we give money to them, and they turn around and take money from businesses and multiply the dollars we spend times 10, and they bring events such as downtown and man town and these various activities. Those drive economic development, along with the LAIC, who helps support bringing in those businesses, or works with the businesses to help with their expansions, either through loans, or ensuring that those infrastructure needs are met. So I think we need to be concerned about what are the necessities, cover that aspect first, but when the budget allows, and we have to start taking a look at those quality-of-life things and those economic development opportunities, we need to take those into consideration then.
Thank you. Now, Mary?
Well, I think in answering the question, we have to start by acknowledging all the work that LAIC does, because, I mean, these are issues that they are really focused on. That's their mission, you know, especially to bring economic development into the community. And they've been doing a great job of that. I think the city's responsibility is, first of all, bringing to the table the things, the tools they do have, you know, for example, the TIF for the developer. I mean, you didn't actually get it, the county got it, but that's how you were able to put in the cyber estates. So bringing to the table any of the tools that are available through the city, I think that's important. But truthfully, I think one of the most important things we can do is work at creating a culture that is proactive and flexible, because, is all we have to do is look around us, and we can see what happens when there's a lot of infighting, you know? Has Oldham or Motor Rutland decided on an opt-out yet? You know, how many times have they been fighting over that? And how long did they fight about it beforehand? And all of that, because there was all this bickering on all of this stuff. And Roy probably remembers this, but for a while, they were talking about building a county jail, and the police department and the sheriff's department were going to be in this whole building together. And the next thing you know, there's an internal ch-ch-ch going on, and I don't exactly know all the details, although I've heard a lot from a lot of different people about what happened. The next thing you know, that's not on the table anymore, because something happened in those discussions, in those meetings. What we have to do is do what we can to build consensus and to build a culture where our orientation is problem-solving and working together.
Thank you. Luke?
I think affordable housing stems from affordability in our town. I think that, you know, keeping, you guys doing a good job with our infrastructure, keeping our utilities down, keeping our, and doing a really good job with it. I know, like, utility lines over the past decade or so, we've been burying them and taking care of our community really well. You know, bringing down our costs for maintenance for the community. You know, I like, I do like the programs of creating more opportunities for businesses to come down, kind of creates a little bit of competitiveness amongst the community, and it creates job opportunities. We'll be able to afford houses in this town and kind of keep the members of the community involved. So, thank you.
Thank you. Sarah?
I am actually comfortable with the questions that we have so far, so Kelly?
Yeah, same here.
Okay. Then if you wouldn't mind, in that, as a commission in that, we will, I'm going to say, retreat to the boardroom back here and see if there's any other things in that that the commission would like to discuss. And again, I want to really thank all of you in that for, you know, stepping forward in that to be a part of the city commission. So with that, I will make a motion that we go into executive session.
Mr. Merrick? Do you want to give opportunity for public comment first?
Thank you for reminding.
And I would say, applicants, thank you for joining us. Feel free to sit back. That way, if somebody does want to speak, they can have a seat.
I didn't recognize who you were, so he was.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to make comment?
Sorry, I forgot who you were. That's okay. That's okay.
Nothing's written?
No.
Okay?
Please chair.
Okay. Seeing no public comment, then do we have a motion to go into executive session? I think we did.
Motion to go into executive session.
Second. Okay. All those in favor, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, we will move into executive session, and then let you know if there's anything further we would like to discuss.
Recording stop.